My flag of agents to the flag.
Of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is to approve the previous minutes from March fifth. Do we have any comments, additions, or changes? Make sure your mic is on if you wanna.
I move to approve the minutes from March fifth.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Let's proceed to vote then. Once... Oh, roll call could be... Did you wanna do roll call? Okay. Well, let's put that on the agenda then, shall we? Well, we've got a motion on the table, but let's, um, have a roll call first, I guess. So, roll call first.
Bob?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes. Now, we have a motion and a second on the table, is there any discussion, any changes? Then let's proceed to vote.
I'm gonna repeat myself. Bob?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes. Uh, next item is, uh, public participation, if anyone would care to speak to any item that's not on the agenda. Uh, there's a limit to the number of speakers, although public comments will be held to an overall time of thirty minutes. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, and may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. Is there anybody here that wants to speak to something that's not on the agenda?
Lana Waters, I live in Cortez. I kindly request that the next item of business be removed from the agenda as it is incomplete. The owners of La Pew, one who has been a city employee for forty years, are very familiar with the process. Yet staff has decided to...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, this is an agenda item.
No, no, this is, no, I'm asking you to remove it, it's an incomplete application.
Well, that can be addressed, that can be addressed by the board and staff.
You won't let me address it after it...
Well...
So, yeah, Patrick.
Rules don't allow you to address agenda items during public comment.
Rules don't account, don't count.
Anyone else care to comment on anything not on the agenda? Okay, then let's move on to the first item of public hearing, and Nancy, would you highlight us on that?
Good evening. Uh, so the first item is a site plan request for a um, four thousand foot office shop structure. Staff, if you've looked through the report, staff is recommending that you continue the application to a date certain, and do not take public comment, um, or any comment from the applicant at this time. The concern being, since we are requesting that you continue the application to July second, date certain, we wanna keep the record complete at that time, and have all public comment on the record when the project is actually heard by you. So, staff's recommending that you continue this app, open the item, continue it to July second, twenty twenty-four, um, and that's it. Are there any questions?
We would need a motion to continue it, correct?
Yes. I gave you, I think, a recommended motion there.
I make a motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission continue the hearing for the site development plan for an office shop building on property located at eighteen eighty Industrial Road, Cortez, Colorado, in the industrial zone to the regular planning committee, to be held on July second, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second to that?
Second. Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I would guess, since they need more information, it makes sense to continue it to July. Let's have a vote then.
Emily?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes. So, motion continued passes, and we'll look at it in July, if we get our information in. Next item of business is a public hearing for, uh, site plan review for the Vault property, body by design, Nancy, would you care to highlight us?
Hang on, hopefully, there we go. All right. Feels like I went too far already. This next request is a site plan for twelve forty Lebanon Road, um, also currently body by design. Um, they are proposing a, an addition to the existing building. Um, large addition, it's approximately will double the size of the existing site. Um, close, just under five thousand square feet, um, will be added. Um, just to give you an idea of the location, so this is Lebanon Road off North Broadway, um, the entrance to the industrial park. Right here is the trailhead for Carpenter Reserve Preserve. Um, and body by, by design is this building right here. Um, just zoom me in a little bit more. Um, currently developed, existing parking, the building is right there, and the addition is proposed in the back end. The site is fairly level and open, um, should be relatively easy to develop. Um, one of the issues that we'll discuss a little bit is, is a portion of the property is located within a flood zone. Um, the addition is proposed off of the back here, um, out, it looks like outside of the flood zone, but I think you'll see, um, a comment about this and a condition in the agency comments. Um, here's the proposed site plan for the building. As you can see, they're simply mirroring that this is the existing building, existing parking, existing detention, drainage, and landscaping. Um, they're proposing to basically build, uh, the same size off the back of it with new parking, um, around the building there. Um, your criteria when you're looking at a site plan from the land code are to look at paving layout of streets, um, access in and out, provisions for drainage, parking, areas designated for landscaping, and then we have anything else, um, that in the interest of promoting public health, safety, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare. Here's a, a quick review of the development standards. I think you can see here that, um, the minimum lot area greatly exceeds the requirement for the industrial zone. Um, setbacks also, in every case greatly exceed the required setbacks in industrial zone. And maximum lot coverage, which is required to be less than fifty percent, is all the way down at seven point two percent. Uh, maximum height, I did not have that when we did, when I did this review, but it is proposed under the thirty-five feet maximum. Um, parking, the requirement for these, for, for the building would be thirty-three spaces for the expanded building. Um, they're proposing forty. Landscaping is, the requirement under the code is ten percent, or thirteen thousand square feet. They are proposing eleven thousand square feet, a little bit over that, landscaped, and then another seventy-five thousand, um, which is in natural land, or undisturbed land cover. Um, so I've got that, that total at sixty-two percent. Um, as far as agency comments, I just wanna go over it a little bit. We did have it reviewed by, um, the GIS coordinator, wait, coordinator. Um, he expressed concern about the floodplain on the south side of the building. Um, he felt like it should not be an issue, given the finished floor elevation, um, of the expansion. Um, and simply, um, spoke to the address of twelve forty will remain to cover both the addition. Um, he did say if the units, if the spaces are separated by a partition, um, then they would want a second, um, address to be assigned. The only other concerns were raised by the city engineer. Um, he expressed some concerns with the drainage on the property, um, and the information that had been previously submitted. He has asked for additional runoff volume calculations from a licensed professional engineer. Um, it's possible that a retention structure would be required, depending on what those calculations are. We do not have those final calculations at this point. We, I have spoken with the applicants, however, they have retained an engineer. Um, they just had some delays in getting that report from them, but they've agreed to do whatever the report shows and whatever the, the county engineer, or city engineer asked for. Um, he also asked that we, they actually show the boundaries of the floodplain on the drainage plan, um, and make sure that, uh, obviously that there's no issue with, uh, floodplain, or they comply with the rise requirement. So, based on all those comments, um, staff is recommending approval of the site plan. Um, we've given you a draft resolution. There are five conditions of approval that we're recommending. Um, the first one is sort of our standard that says, um, they'll comply with all requirements of, um, all codes. Um, the second one, um, again, is fairly standard, um, asking that we get final construction plans, drawings, reports, as required by the city engineer, um, prior to building permit. Um, and then I'm adding a third condition that I'm, I think you're gonna see as standard now, which is prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant's engineer shall certify that all improvements were constructed in conformance with the approved plan. Fourth, the drainage report meeting CDPIT requirements be submitted and approved by the city engineer prior to issuance of a building permit for the property. Um, and then again, the standard that all improvements shall be installed prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Are there any questions?
Did I hear you say that the building was gonna be a separate building and needed a different address?
I, I, I think the applicant could probably address that, I don't know that it is, I haven't seen the actual building plans. If it is, the, the issue was, it needs a separate address.
That'd be a US Post Office thing, wouldn't it?
No, it's for emergency response.
Oh, okay. Anybody have any questions for Nancy? And I guess if the applicant is here, if you would come and and then we'll open it up for public hearing. I guess if we have questions for the applicant, we can ask him here, okay? State your name and that's it.
Uh, Terry T. Vault, owner of Body By Design. It will be one building, heading onto the existing building to the east.
So, the fire requirements or code or whatever could change? Cause if your old building isn't up to new standards or whatever, then you're gonna have to redo the whole thing. Is that gonna be a problem?
No. To do whatever we need to.
Speak into the microphone, please, so we can get it recorded. Oh, it's not on either.
Gotcha, yeah, sorry, uh, whatever we need to do.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the applicant then? Um, well, we always like to see businesses expanding, um, thank you, and we'll open it up for public comment now, for or against, I guess. Open up the public hearing, anyone here to speak for or against? Uh, please go up and use a microphone, state your name. Seen none, we'll close the public hearing. Any commissioners have any comments or questions?
I think anytime we can be business friendly is a good day, so I'll make a motion to recommend that the Cortez City Council approve P and Z Resolution Number Four, Series twenty twenty-four, a resolution approving the site development plan for an addition to the existing building on property located at twelve forty Lebanon Road, Cortez, Colorado, in the industrial zone, with the five conditions that Nancy read.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other comments or questions? We'll proceed to vote then.
Katrina?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes, motion passes. Um, next item on the agenda is items of other business, and it looks like some county information things. Thank you.
Okay, I kinda wanted to add, um, combine this item with the discussion, general discussion of, um, IGA, but we'll go over this quickly. Um, so this is, application is in front of the county, and it is a request simply to cut off a three acre parcel from a fourteen acre parcel. Um, they're gonna do it for a family member, although that shouldn't really matter. Um, it is located within our one mile area of influence along County Road H. Um, oh, it is still up here, um, if I oh, I have the mouse issue again, won't I? Showing?
Yeah.
I didn't change it, um, which I believe is right here, if I got it right? County Road H, so it is close, um, into the city, but it's a fairly low impact application here to simply carve off a small one acre parcel. The county sends us these asking for comments, so I, we're just...
Excuse me a minute, Nancy, um, yeah, this one is not showing anything.
Up, there it goes.
Now it is.
All you had to do was walk in the room.
Thank you.
Um, so H, I believe is right down here. You can see that in the application, it's, it's an area of sort of mixed use, does not...
Are you moving your mouse?
Was. But sometimes the mouse doesn't show up unless I go to extreme measures. Not showing up. Okay, well.
County may request a joint session.
That's right. Yeah, um, so we're down on the lower part of the map there, um, and I'm gonna talk about this map a little bit more when we get to the next item, um, so it's the off, southern portion of the county, or the city.
Where's Love, where's Love's at?
What?
Where's Love's at in relation to, um, Road H?
I can bring up the map on my computer, Nancy, if you want.
Yes.
This, this application.
Yeah.
Which is farther north than where Love's at.
Doesn't that road eventually come out by Love's though? When you, you take that curve and then go south, and then it... Okay, what if you keep going though? You go south. Yeah. Yeah, and isn't this, MG is where Love's at.
Oh, cause it, this is good. Up in here, and can you see me now?
Yeah.
Are you seeing the pointer? So, yeah, H, you'd have to go down to it doesn't go all the way across.
Right.
Highway. Um...
And they're just trying to subdivide it?
Yes. Seventeen acres total, they wanna divide it into fourteen and three, I think, or was it eleven and three?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for, uh, staff. It mentions an AR three dash nine rezoning, what is that all about?
That's a county zone district.
Well, okay, is that the present zoning?
AR is agricultural residential, I believe.
Okay, just a question.
Do they get the sub, subdividing to go through, are they gonna try and rezone it to something different?
They have to subdivide and rezone, or rezone to subdivide.
Do you know what the people's plans are?
They said that it's for, to create a new lot for a family member.
Okay. Does anybody have any one comment to the county on anything, or just thank them for letting us know?
We did wanna talk a little bit after the building permit item about the intergovernmental agreement and what you're supposed to comment on, um, through the intergovernmental agreement, because I, county sends us all their applications for comment, we commonly put them on your agenda when they're within the one or three mile zone, um, but I wanna give you some guidance on what you're...
Well, and should I provide some background for the commissioners as to why this might be here? Um, I will do that. When the county was looking at Dollar General going in up on Road N, I happened to go to the public hearing that they had, and it was well noted that P and Z had no comment on their public hearing. Or, uh, you know, they asked for comments when we sent it to the county, and anyway, the person next to me knows my position and says, whoa, why didn't you guys say something? And my comment was, I don't think it was on our agenda. It's kind of in that gray area of it was past a mile, but not past three miles. And so, um, I kinda brought up city staff that, well, maybe we should have some discussion as to what the IGA says and kinda go from there, so that's why you're sitting here still talking about this. It's my fault. So, what, what does the IGA relate to?
You wanna jump to that agenda item?
There's one item in between, which is the...
Oh.
Building permits.
Building permits.
Yeah, though, usually those are just information items that we look at and move on, we don't really the which is what these things are for this timeframe. So then I guess we can move on to item C?
Yes.
Okay. We already started general discussion. So, we did provide for you a copy of the intergovernmental agreement, um, and unlike many intergovernmental agreements, um, it's specific to road and street management between the city of Cortez, Colorado, and Montezuma County, although it goes a little bit farther than maintenance. Um, so I guess the things I would highlight in there, um, are that development, essentially, the, what the agreement says is that if the city is looking at doing any development in the city that would impact county roads, we would send it to them for comment. And if requested, we may also require a developer in the city to make improvements to county roads, assuming, uh, you know, concurrent with their level of impact on the county roads. And then that reciprocates, so that any development within the one mile area, which has impacts on the city street system, the county would require the developer to comply, um, to make improvements to city streets. Um, it keeps going on to what densities are and what they might require, um, of the development in the county. Um, and then it, it basically says that we're gonna, as long as it's legal to do so, the city and county would condition development approvals to require mitigation to roads outside their jurisdiction. Going on, we, we have a requirement that the city would provide the county with any, with an opportunity to review and comment on proposed developments in the city. So far, we haven't really had anything that we felt like in the last couple of years that would impact county roads. So, we really haven't been forwarding much to the county. Um, but proposed development applications in the, to the county, um, make sure I do this right, the county would, will require the city, will... The county would, will require the city, will provide the city with an opportunity to review and comment. On any proposed development applications in the county. It then says that are expected to necessitate physical modifications to a city street or intersection. Or increased traffic volume on streets within city jurisdiction. Um, they, it also s- though says that the county would honor anything by this, specific request by the city. To comment on development proposals. Um, while. It, it then says that obviously we'll, we'll, we'll listen to your comments. But the final authority and discretion regarding approval, um, and conditions would be with the county commissioners. Keeps going on, um, talking about the one mile area and just, I've got this, oh, it's not up there anymore. Come on. I know. I should've brought the paper map, huh Cheryl? Should I go get the paper map?
I can plug it into my computer.
Now what? It worked half an hour ago.
Right, um, so go to the, stop the slideshow real quick.
I saw it for a minute. Okay, there we go. And then how do I get the mouse to show? Alright, I'm gonna go, if you can get it, you can point. You can, it's hard, a little bit hard to see, but the one mile planning area is that.
I'm gonna plug it in, sorry Nancy, I'll plug it into my computer that shows the black and white version.
We talked about bringing the paper in, I thought it'd be harder to see. Um, th- there's another version of the one mile planning area that shows on the master street plan map. Um, can you go back to the other one though? Cause we wanna talk about the street plan.
Okay.
Fine, um, and I don't believe that the Dollar General was within even the three mile planning area. It was outside of it. Okay, so.
Are you sure?
What?
Are you sure?
Very sure. Rachel, Cheryl and I review every one of those to see whether they're within the three mile area.
That was on Road N.
What?
It was on Road N. L starts at the city limits and you go one mile, you get M, and you go two miles, you get N.
M, you've got M.
No, no, L, M, N.
Okay, so, um, and it's harder to see than I thought it would be, but see the, the purple? Heavy purple line around the edge, for some reason when they did the master street plan, they, they take in an area north of the city. But on the south si- side of the city, they, they snugged it right up against city limits. So when we're commenting, or when I'm looking at, at the county, it's the last page. Um, at the, the county applications, I'm, I'm reviewing them based on the IGA. And looking at impacts to roads, if, if they're subdividing, do we need more right of way? Is a road planned through there? Um, but on the south side of the city, it, it doesn't really apply. The, the master street plan has no comments as to what our, our street system expansion should look like. On the south side, on the north side, we do. Um, we do have the ability, we do have some roads that are proposed that might need widening, et cetera. So when I'm preparing, going through the county submittals, we first look to see with, if it's within the one mile area. And then second, look to see if it's within the three mile area and the master street plan. Um, in this case, it's in the one mile area, the, the one we looked at tonight, not within the master street plan. But the county seems to want us to comment, or there was concern expressed when we didn't comment on the Dollar General. Um, I guess my concerns based on this IGA is that our, our. What the IGA says is that we should be commenting about impacts to roads. Whether we think it's a good idea, or what the neighbors think, or if we like the density or not. Um, so that's what I've limited the, the, the comments to when I'm providing you with county, um, referrals. First, if they're in the one mile plan, you're usually gonna see them, within the one mile area, you're gonna see them. They're in the three mile area, mostly north of town, you're probably gonna see them. Um.
But only if the street plan goes that far, right?
Well, it does, it goes up to the one mile area on the north. Those are almost co- co-terminus. But you could, if you want, and you guys discuss, we, we get, the county sends us everything. Um, so we can send you more, and if you want more discussion or just to see them for your information, we can provide those.
Well, I would say keep doing what you're doing, but maybe just throw them in as information items for us.
If they're within three mile?
Yeah.
Okay.
But not necessarily having a discussion on it, just to keep us informed. But it almost looked like the, the city office could comment back to them without even coming to us. If there was something affecting the streets or whatever.
You're right.
Okay.
But I think we would come to you because that's the way we've done it.
May, may I comment, Mister Chairman?
Sure.
Uh, I've, in going through these, I see that there's. Meaning to comprehensive plans of both the county and the city. Uh, that reference the Colorado statutes, perhaps if you, if staff saw some, uh, area of interest there. The comprehensive plans as they relate to that, they could key us in that there's an issue there.
Sure.
Is that?
Uh, you know, our comprehensive plan isn't super specific. Um, other than encouraging development within the city and, um, not outside the county, so. But we could, we could do that for sure, especially if it were something, a bigger development. You know, this, creating a three acre parcel is not a great example, um, of a. Submittal that we really wanna spend much time on. But I did wanna get the direction from you as to what we should be showing you. I wanted you to see what the IGA says. There was some discussion about a year ago with the county on revising that IGA. Um, and I think we would encourage that, but, uh, they cautiously, because there's also concern on the part of county residents. On the city having too much influence over them. Um, but they, we haven't heard from them again, have we Rachel?
Haven't. Know what happened.
I'm not sure. Any of the commissioners currently here, um, very seldom and rarely do we make some comment back to them. And the question is, do they actually listen to us or not? Probably up to them. But I don't think we've made any comment on anything. You've been here longer than them, but do you ever remember? I'm, I ha- I do remember making some comments.
The only one I remember is up towards the industrial park, they were doing a development. It was adjacent to our sidewalk, um, and in between there and, um, a trail, I think. Into maybe Carpenter Reserve, and we're like, could you put a sidewalk, just connect our sidewalk with the Carpenter Reserve? Um, it would make so much sense, but they did not, we, and we wrote that, but they didn't do it.
Well.
Oh, that's right, industrial proposal that was, uh, they wanted to rezone to industrial adjacent to the multifamily at Brandon's Gate. So we did express concern with that.
Well, maybe it, it should be a matter of scale too, you know, it's, uh, uh, what we reviewed tonight is, you know, not, not that big a deal. But if it was a store or something, you know, it's gonna generate considerable traffic, perhaps staff should go into more. Do more effort in analyzing it, you know, automobile trips and that sort of thing, so that we could.
Now is that just within the three mile or the one mile or both or?
Yes.
Got it. Perfectly clear.
And, and our comment could be, well, you guys need to take a second look at this. And that might be our comment to them, is that they need to analyze it a little bit more or something, but. Okay, that was it. I just kinda wanted that to. Um, you don't feel like we should revisit the IGA with the county, do you? I mean it?
At some point, we, we have been in a discussion with the county about revisiting that. And also just the area of influence. Um, but yeah, so that is likely to come, but we wanna get some other things, and, you know, underway first. So the land use code for one of, one of them.
Understood. I mean, basically it would be our office communicating with their office to talk about it. And then trying to have city council and county commissioners okay it, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Anybody lost my agenda? Yeah. I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn then.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Proceed to vote.
Bob?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes. Meeting adjourned.